Go outside the walls. She was on a cane, she was vulnerable, and she wanted to do something, so she needed to talk about what the project was. Once she understood, she started taking pictures, and she put her cane in every picture as an artistic device.
Wow.
And within a short period of time, she got rid of the cane and left the walls and went walking. She was afraid to cross Ocean Avenue because cars move very fast. She started to cross Ocean Avenue, and she took her camera everywhere with her. And she got re-engaged in college, re-engaged in life, and it was with the camera.
Now, how old was she when she started?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. Don't you ever think you can't move forward? You can, ninety-one. Well, Florence, who we're speaking of now, has a tremendous gift for the written word.
And the spoken word.
And, yeah, I mean, she's an engaging woman.
Florence did everything. Florence chose to do interviews. She was brilliant at that. But Florence's perhaps biggest gift, and her photos are stunning, is that Florence speaks in perfect paragraphs, not just perfect sentences, and her words are totally poetic.
You know, this is a perfect time for us to look at some of these images we're talking about. So, sit back and enjoy some of the pictures that Age Looks at Aging have created.
Jonathan, how does it feel to watch your mother in whatever stage she's at, to observe the aging process in her?
It gives me cause for hope that in my own life, I will be as active and engaged and dynamic as my mother is at age ninety, and that I'm proud of her and her ability to cope with the changes in her own life and to remain engaged in both her own world of very interesting influences, as well as engaged with me and my family. I have great reason to be hopeful.
Gerald, what brings you here to the senior house, Oceans?
I didn't have any place else to go. I don't pay any attention to age. I'd rather forget that I'm crumbling. I'd rather, you know, go ahead and be as active as I can. I feel young, actually.
I think you'll agree, those are some pretty powerful images. Brian, the nice thing about a good idea is that you can replicate it. Everybody can adopt it. How can people find out more about this program? Where should they go? What's the website address?
We have a website that is almost completed now. It's our second website, and this is a social media website. And people can find it at www.AgeLooksAtAging.org.
Okay? AgeLooksAtAging.org. And all spelled out, lowercase, of course?
Yes.
Okay. And you create some tapes, and we can call them leadership tapes, but you can actually download or access you explaining the program to people.
That's correct. We actually have training videos where people can learn how to use a camera, how to express themselves with a camera, how to do an interview, various training videos. But also, we're creating, and it's been filmed already, a leader training DVD or MP3. I'm not sure what format it'll be available in, but it actually is designed to teach anyone, anywhere in the world, how to run this project.
I see.
So, our goal is to have this run worldwide, in any kind of a community, a senior center, an assisted living home, or even a private community.
Well, you have shared with me that one of the first things you learned is that don't stifle these older people. They will surprise you with what they come up with.
Yes. And I have to admit, I was inauthentic. The first time I walked into this particular community, I saw somebody walking with a walker slowly and was concerned with whether she could participate fully. And then I realized that was completely inauthentic because I was denying her any possibility at all. So, I had to give that up, and what I got was that I realized they're full of possibility and they want to express themselves.
Yeah. You know what I love, Brian? You're a professional photographer, so you would know the difference with these things. Now, in just a few minutes, we're going to actually have Florence sit down with us, and you'll get a chance to meet a really special woman. We'll be right back with Aging Well in L.A.
I'm Dr. Scott Kaiser, board-certified family physician and specialist in geriatric medicine. Welcome to The Empowered Patient. We have a very special guest today, Fran Phillips. So, now, for our viewers at home, grab a pen, grab a pad of paper, because Fran's going to give us some great tips on how to make the most out of your health care visit, not to be afraid to get a second opinion when you need it, knowing that you're the boss in what you need to do. So, get that pen and get ready to write down some great tips from Fran here, and get the most out of your health, tips that could help you live longer and better. How you doing, Fran?
Fine, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
So, tell me, Fran, what is it that you think seniors need to know about taking charge of their health and being more active in their health care?
I always go for a second opinion, sometimes a third. Some of my friends say, "Oh, you may hurt the doctor's feelings." Has nothing to do with it.
I hear that all the time. I mean, we're not talking about a car with some minor body work here. I mean, this is our health.
Well, I even go get car opinions on cars. So, certainly, I'm going to take care of myself and my husband.
Certainly for health, right, right. Tell us about that experience of getting a second opinion and even a third.
Well, Jerry went to a doctor, and he said, "You need another angioplasty on your leg." And Jerry went to his rheumatologist, and the rheumatologist called Jerry one night and said, "I've called that doctor twice and hasn't returned my call." And he wanted to discuss the problem with the doctor, suggested the angioplasty. And I went to see that doctor on Monday, and he said, "Well, what does he want to talk to me about?" I said, "Well, why don't you call and find out?" And I said to Jerry, "We're not going to use this doctor. You don't have to go on the anesthesia for nothing."
So, when you found that this doctor was unresponsive, you were disappointed, and that brought up a red flag, that this doctor wouldn't communicate with your other doctor, wasn't responsive.
Right.
So, what did you do?
I asked, "Who was the top vascular doctor in the city?" I went to see him with Jerry, and he said, "You do not need an operation."
So, then you went to a second doctor, and this doctor had talked with your primary doctor, reviewed the records, went through all the information, then you sat down together and were able to make an informed decision.
Yes, and they all agreed Jerry did not need an operation.
And you were insistent on getting a second opinion.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You have to do that, and if you don't, you're making a very big mistake for yourself.
So, Fran, tell me, what did you get out of reading this booklet, Talking with Your Doctor?
You'll have to excuse me, but it comes with age. Summary Making Decisions with Your Doctor. Ask about different treatments. Are there any risks associated with the treatment? How soon should treatment start? How long will it last? Are there other treatments available? How much will the treatment cost? Will my insurance cover it? Ask about prevention.
We have to think about prevention as an option, and these are all ways that we can be more active in our own health care.
Right.
Take charge of our health such that we can have better outcomes and really live longer and better.
Well, like, exercise is very important. I walk up to five miles a day, and that has done a lot, a great deal for me because I have scoliosis. And the doctor said to me, who has known me all my life, said, "I thought you would be in a wheelchair by now."
And Fran, thanks so much for bringing up exercise. We can't talk about that enough on this show. We're going to have to do future segments on physical activity. Absolutely, staying active is a critical part of healthy aging. Fran, thank you so much for joining us on The Empowered Patient. Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. You're doing a wonderful job, and really, read this book, Talk with Your Doctor. It is so important for your health, and it is free. So, make the call. It's important.
I am empowered, and I'm taking charge of my health.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
Hey, buddy, pull over! Pull to the right! Don't you know, red lights and sirens mean pull to the right in an emergency seconds count, so when you drive, pay attention, or else...
Save it, buddy. The ball called.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. And now, you get to meet the person we've been talking about. Meet Florence Horn. Florence, welcome to our show. It's so good of you to come and join us.
Thank you.
Tell me what you thought when this crazy guy handed you a camera. Did you think, "Oh, I can do this," or were you hesitant?
No, I didn't think I could do it. As a matter of fact, my first introduction to the project, I was very skeptical. I greeted it with very mild interest.
Mm-hmm.
But I knew there was something about it that set it up...
About caregiver stress. If you find yourself as the primary person taking responsibility for another person's activities of daily living, for example, preparing meals, helping the person get dressed and groomed, helping them with bathing and toileting needs, or helping them move from one place to another, then you are a family caregiver. There are many lovely things about being a caregiver. However, oftentimes, being a family caregiver can slowly inch up to the levels of high stress. Regardless of whether you're a family caregiver taking on these tasks from a sense of responsibility, or you're doing it from a loving place in your heart, or a combination of both, caregiver stress is a reality that cannot and should not be ignored. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that treatments are not working the way you'd like to see them work, social withdrawal in that you're not going out to see friends, or be with family, or other activities that were once fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds, depression, which can start to break your spirit and affect your ability to cope, or irritability, which then makes you react in different and negative ways, and health problems begin to take their toll, both physically and mentally. Signs of caregiver stress include denial about the reality of the situation, anger that perhaps the treatments aren't working the way you thought they would, social withdrawal from family, friends, and avoiding things that used to be fun, anxiety levels about facing another day and what the future holds, depression can begin to break your spirit and affects your ability to cope, irritability leads to moodiness and triggers negative responses and reactions, health problems begin to take their toll, both mentally and physically, on family caregivers. Being aware of and acknowledging these signs of stress are important, so that is why we are reminding you that caring for the caregiver is also important. If the family caregiver fails, then what? Who's going to step in with caregiving? So let's talk about how to relieve some of the stresses in family caregiving. Create a family network of support, including friends. Learn about the medical condition of the person you are caring for. Seek available patient and family services through community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, senior centers, disease-specific organizations like the Alzheimer's Association, Heart Association, American Diabetes, et cetera. Call the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging for information and referrals, and there are many more resources out there that you can learn about. Being informed is a great way to minimize stress. Other ways of reducing caregiver stress include asking for clarification when you don't understand something. Find a local support group to learn more about options and resources. Fellow caregivers are a great source of support, information, and resources. Remember to give yourself credit for what you're doing. It's okay to periodically make a mistake, you'll learn from it. When you feel your stress levels rising, remember to step away from the situation for a few minutes. Take deep breaths to bring fresh oxygen into your bloodstream and to your brain, and then go back and take care of the matter at hand. Remember, caring for the caregiver is important, too.
The project handed me a camera that allowed me to look at many things that were close to me in my environment, but that I had not carefully looked at. And in using that medium, I allowed a lot more influences to come into my life. I had the open door because I carried a camera and carried a recorder, and it made it easier for me to interact with other people than if I were to pursue them without the supervision of the project.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.[354.13]
Thirty first, sir.
Without objection. Do we have any cards on these items?
Sir, we do. We have cards on thirty-two and thirty-three.
Thirty... Thirty-two and thirty-three?
That is correct, sir.
Members, specials?
Twenty-four. I'm sorry.
Mrs. Stein is gonna be very busy today.
The banner day today.
And he has requested, uh...
Twenty-four.
Item twenty-four, correct?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so, for you, and only for you, we will hold, uh, that item. No more, see no more requests for specials. Why don't we open the roll? Close the roll? And tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, where does that bring us?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item thirty-nine is an item for which public, a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Weeza?
Can we, uh, call that special? We have an amended motion that we'd like to circulate.
Okay, so an item on the...
Thirty-nine.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you have that?
Yes, sir.
All right, so now, that brings us to what? General public comment, or...?
Uh, yes, sir.
If I could ask, Mr. The Councilman from the great Fourth District to please take the comp. Mr. Lavan... Mr. LaBange will preside over this portion of today's council session. Thank you, Mr. Lavan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Mr. Clerk, do you have the cards right there for me?
Sir, the cards are, uh, to your immediate right.
Right, public comment cards?
That is correct, sir.
John Walsh, Henry Marine, and Donna Pearlman. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We put up a new post over the weekend, Googling at Walsh Confidential. Sunday was the first day it was up there for twenty-four hours, and we had eleven thousand eight hundred visitors to our website because it is a Drop Dead CRA Day post. As you know, February first, we will be here to celebrate Drop Dead CRA Day all over the United States, excuse me, all over the state of California. I'd like to now issue an apology to the mayor of the city of Los Angeles and to Herb Wesson, on behalf of every progressive Caucasian in this area. As you know, yesterday, in the LA Times, there was a racist attack on the mayor and on Herb Wesson, where they were described on the op-ed page by the editor-at-large of the LA Times, Jim Newton, as "thick as thieves." Would he have said that about two white politicians? I have asked Eddie Hartenstein, the publisher, to make a personal apology. And I'd like to point out that when we have our meeting, we have our big celebration and press conference here for Drop Dead CRA Day, we will have Valerie Stewart, whose father starred in Song of the South and whose Ebony Showcase Theater was stolen from him by the CRA. We are asking the CRA to sell to the Stewart family the, uh, what is now called Nate Holden Theater for one dollar. It is a... You wanna know what racism is? Take a look at the CRA. HollywoodHighlands.org. Walsh Confidential. Keep tuned. Henry Marine?
Happy New Year. Last year, we discovered that one thousand dollars of government pay equals six months of government service. In addition, that any civilian employee who earns six months of government pay or more in a pay period within a year, except in a temporary pay position, must be provided a year of service credit and participation in a government employee pension and benefit plan. But we know that didn't happen. Instead, there are probably about fifty, uh, employees here, employed past six months, and denied participation in Lasers, and denied a permanent position. So, you learned about it last year, and you know that, uh, using public funds as advised by CAO got the elected officials of Bell arrested. So, uh, it's time for you to start stand up for something because there's only one leg to legally stand on in this horseshoe. So, I'd appreciate it if you start working.
Thank you, Henry. Out in Van Nuys City Hall, Donna Pearlman.
Who's next? Donna Pearman or the other one? Oh, okay. It is me. And it's Pearman. Anyway, uh, Miriam wanted to... Donna Pearman. Miriam wanted to be here, but she's not feeling well, and she and her comments will be missed. And she'll probably say this too by her beautiful Filipino neighbor, Rosalynn Reyes, passed away. She was surviving many children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. She was ninety. She was extremely kind and a great friend to Miriam. God bless her soul. I'm oppressed by the poison of President Herb Wesson on dealing with the P-word. That's offensive to females. I'm glad the council will not allow that. We don't need to hear this in the Eric Garcetti horseshoe. With all the words in the English language, I believe other words can convey the same message. I see the city council is hanging on to the CRA. I agree with John Walsh comments on Drop Dead CRA and all the great, uh, information he has on the CRA. But many don't realize the CRA has many projects that probably will last a decade or more. So, I'm not sure the CRA is dead. I believe the CRA is dead when I see no projects. And there's nothing racist about saying, uh, John Walsh, about saying that politicians are as thick as thieves. I've heard white politicians describe this such. We can't just say, I believe that people should be able to put down a, uh, politician that's what they're there for. We can't just say that. No, we can't say that, uh, if they're a minority. So, let's get past that. And of course, you have to say why you're against it and why they're thick as thieves, which I believe they are. We need to, uh, help with the city employees. And let's get, uh, the retiree healthcare. And that's what Lasers needs to have. They need to have the retiree healthcare because when they retire, they should have, uh, healthcare. So, anyway, I'll be back on the CRA. Thank you.
Cheryl Eickley, Juan Dollhouse, Arminak Nuryjayan. If you could all please line up, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Eickley, and I live in District Four. I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and today I speak for myself. What I'd like to ask from the council is if you could contact, um, State Attorney General Kamala Harris in regards to a moratorium on foreclosures in the state of California or any other action that would ultimately freeze foreclosures in the state until we can figure out what's going on with the fraudulent activity. Today, I'm here with Carlos Marquin, Michelle Schacht, Suzanne O'Keeffe, and several of my other colleagues, Ruth Sarnoff and Don Bush and a few others. We are joined by Faith Parker, a seventy-nine-year-old retired schoolteacher from South Central who has been foreclosed upon and will be evicted from her home if action is not taken. She lives in your district, Ms. Perry. And Bertha Herrera, who lives in Cardenas District. And she's already been evicted by the sheriff at gunpoint. I want to thank, um, Councilman Rosenthal for all his help in this matter with the foreclosure issue. And also, Councilman Garcetti. Yesterday, I got an email from Garcetti's office helping me understand better what the city has already done on the foreclosure issue. And I really do appreciate a lot of what's happened. I think there's more we can do in this city and more we can ask of the county, the state, and the federal government. So, I would really appreciate it if you guys can contact the state attorney general and see what more we can do to ultimately freeze foreclosures in the city of Los Angeles. I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dollhouse.
Yes, uh, my name is Juan Alcala, also known in the internet as the Dollhouse Dude. And, uh, the reason for the Dollhouse is that I was wearing a dollhouse on my head, representing that every single human being in the world deserves to have a place on earth. I know you're gonna go to heaven, all of you, or half of you are gonna go to hell. So, it doesn't matter where you go after you are alive. It matters where you go when you're alive. You should not have anybody homeless. So, my whole program is called "The United World of Free and Clear," a world where we don't have any landlords, where we have no evictions, where we have no mortgages, and it's very doable. All we have to do is to get the government out of the way. I don't mean throw them away. Just put them aside. Don't interfere. Let the people finance each other out of homelessness. When everybody owns their own place, we will be able to tell city council, "We need new rules." The real estate rules, as they stand right now, are totally wrong. They were made for the Middle Ages. They were made for a feudal system where you had a lord. You still have a landlord. We can finance all the landlords out of our lives forever. But we have to start a new way of thinking. And that's what is missing in this equation here, innovative thinking. And that's what I'm here to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Armin?
Respectable city council members, dear fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Nuryjayan, and I am a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. I run for the seat of, uh, California State Assembly for this year. I run my election campaign on principles of legal and social justice, racial aggression, technological revolution. Actually, as a tax-and-cost liberal, I promise to raise taxes against wealthy taxpayers and rich corporations about fifty percent. In order for all, uh, corporations to be able to pay fair share and in order for, uh, you know, for states to be able to collect revenue and cover budget deficit. And cover budget deficit. And I want to distribute wealth, take money from wealthy gasoline and oil-produced corporations like Texaco, Mobil, Orco, and give it to poor workers in terms of expedited Section Eight housing vouchers, for instance, and, uh, also, uh, I want to replenish city, uh, excuse me, state coffers with oil and gasoline money, but actually, uh, because people of California need to take a ranking for fair share, for a share of profits of all the oil and gasoline corporations. This is a statement of Governor Edmund Brown that he would, uh, reluctant to raise taxes at all, and he wants even a referendum in order to confirm what people want to raise taxes. It's, uh, a front to me. You know, it's a front to all of the democratic public, you know? And mostly, I believe that, uh, Governor Brown should go ahead and raise taxes without any referendum. Actually, I promised to, uh, establish six-month, uh, pregnancy, uh, free, uh, pregnancy leave at the expense of state government. And I promised to raise, uh, speed limit on California freeways and highways, twenty miles up, you know, for all light cars, trucks, and vans. And, uh, also demand closing down medical marijuana dispensing with ripoff California big time, charging up to two hundred dollars per one ounce of little dope.
Thank you. The next set of speakers, Carlos Marquin, Susan O'Keeffe, Michelle Schacht.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carlos Marquin. I live in District Four, and I'm representing myself. I'm from Occupy LA. I'm a homeowner's advocate. Today, I'm representing a homeowner by the name of Mary Gonzalez. She's laying in a hospital, uh, going through her sixth major surgery. She's been fighting with the banks on a loan modification since 2008. They continue to, uh, misplace her documents. She's at the point of being evicted, even while she's in the hospital. I'm asking you, uh, city council, to really take a good look at what's going on in our city with these foreclosures. It is a continued, uh, it's a continued mess that they have created, that we are involved in, and, uh, and people continue to be defrauded by these banks. We know what's going on in the news, how the, uh, the attorneys generals want to do the settlement. And, uh, we really need to take a look at what kind of settlement we're involved with. I urge you to contact the Attorney General Office and do not accept any settlement with these banks that have continued to defraud our citizens, especially the Angelinos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Suzanne O'Keeffe. I, um, am with Occupy LA and also representing myself today. I want to emphasize that this foreclosure issue is really hot right now because, um, the attorneys general are being really pressured by the administration to settle for a really bum deal. This is, this, uh, the deal that they offered is a get-out-of-jail-free pass. It is unjust. The attorney general in Nevada, um, has settled with one servicer for ten to twenty times more than the administration is offering for the entire deal. It is a bad deal for California. It is a bad deal for the citizens, and it's probably a bad deal for the city and the county. You could do much better. I ask you to put pressure on the Attorney General Kamala Harris. She's been lean-on hard to join this group of attorneys general. And I think that she needs to hear from us. She needs to hear from you, that we will stand with her as she goes, pursues her own course. These, uh, these examples that have been brought up are just two or three of the millions of people who have been unrightfully thrown out of their homes. And that is important for you to realize that these people are suffering. And they've been suffering because of the hands of fraud, absolute fraud throughout the system, from mortgage originators all the way through foreclosure fraud and robo-signing. But there's so much of it, we can't get to the bottom of this unless there's a foreclosure freeze. And that is one of the things that we need to do in order to really investigate and not have any more people thrown out of their homes unjustly. Thank you very much. I ask you to write a letter, um, to Kamala Harris asking for a moratorium on foreclosures and pursuing her own, um, investigation and prosecution of the banks. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. O'Keeffe, it's, uh, Attorney General Kamala Harris.
Kamala, I apologize. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Schacht. I'm in Councilman Huizard's district. I'm with Occupy Los Angeles, and I speak for myself today. And I'm also asking you to, um, draft and compose a letter to Kamala Harris. I am one of the cynics who believe that our representative democracy is corrupt, that it's been bought and sold by interests and lobbyists. But, um, I watched with, uh, with dismay, uh, at the inaugural speech of President Barack Obama, who said, "I will do the right thing, but you'll have to make me do the right thing." And so, in that spirit, I, I strongly urge you to write this letter to Kamala Harris, asking her to protect the most vulnerable among California citizens with a foreclosure freeze, a moratorium, and ask her to help us, help you, help Los Angeles do the right thing for those most vulnerable in this mortgage crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Faith Parker, Bertha Herrera, Sandra Parks, or Parker. Calling Bertha Herrera, Faith Parker, and Sandra Parker.
Good morning, esteemed councilpersons. I'm a supporter of the Occupy movement. My name is...
Excuse me, if you could just, uh, reach a little more into the microphone there because we can't hear you. Start all over, restart the clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, esteemed councilpersons. I'm a supporter of the Occupy movement, and my name is Sandra Parker. And I live in District Nine. My mother is Faith Parker, and right now, she's enduring a lot of discomfort and heartache because of the mortgage situation. I'm here to give a personal story regarding home mortgages and the people that the banks hurt with their disrespect, their misinformation, and their abuse of people. Briefly, my mother is seventy-nine. She's worked hard. She owned a number of properties over the years. And she had a situation where she had an apartment building that she wanted to get, uh, loan modification with a company called Aurora Loan Servicing. She successfully completed the loan modification. They sent her a letter, said congratulations. And then, they asked for more paperwork that they lost six times than they foreclosed on her apartment building. In this other scenario, the house she lives in, we've been trying to get a loan modification for three years now. And they've lost information, misinformed us every step of the way. And her house is in danger of being... It has been foreclosed, and she's in danger of being evicted from her home. A seventy-nine-year-old former schoolteacher who's done everything right, or so she thought, except she maybe wasn't so good with the banks and how they treated her. What I'm here for is to ask for a moratorium of foreclosures. And I want our councilperson and anybody that can and will contact State Attorney Kamala Harris to assist us in getting a moratorium so that people like my mother and many, many other people, including myself, won't suffer and be homeless because the banks are unwilling to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this Faith Parker?
Good mornings, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for letting us come here. My name is Faith Parker. I live in the District Nine. I'm here to tell you about what is happening to me. And I'm asking your help in stopping the foreclosure, if you will, please. I have owned my property, my home, since nineteen sixty-two. I have three children. My husband's deceased. I grew, they all and I grew up here. I was a supervisor in early child development at Head Start in Los Angeles. I have a life teaching credential, BS degree, a master's degree in education, early child development and counseling from Cal State LA. I have been teaching over fifty-five years. I've paid all of my bills as due. I've followed all of the rules, done the right things in my life. And I'm asking your help in saving my property. I am severely hurt and disappointed how Bank of America, Mellon Bank, and Aurora Loan Servicing has treated me. I want a moratorium enacted in California to help me and others like me. I thank you in advance for all of your kindness and your help. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to go to the ropes, I'm gonna ask someone from the CLA's office to give you some assistance. Ms. Parker? Sergeant, would you direct her over to you? Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Good morning. My name is Bertha Herrera. Herrera, excuse me. And I'm from District Six. I'm also urging you to please write to the Attorney General on our behalf. I had been foreclosed, uh, on December twenty-sixth. I was not given a notice, a three eviction notice, three-day eviction notice during vacation where no one could help. And I was not served with due process. I was, I was never served at home as people I hear that they normally do. I never saw any documents. The attorney says that they served a tall, slender woman. I'm not a tall, slender woman. That the papers were left, and they were never left on the floor or the outside of my house. I was not aware that I was being evicted. When, back in 2009, I, I requested a loan modification because the loan that I, that I obtained for three years had been, was a predatory loan and was becoming variable in 2010. After several months, I was given the loan modifications stating that... They stated that I did not have to make three payments. I did not make the one payment, the first payment, and thirty days later, they said that I was thirty days late. And from then, I could not recover because they pulled out fees. They said I had forfeited the loan modification, and therefore, there were fees on top of that month that I was behind, and fees upon fees. When I wanted to become current with that one payment behind, I couldn't because they said I owed nearly ten thousand dollars, and either I paid all or nothing. Six months later, my house was sold from under me. I was never notified. And now, I'm evicted. I'm homeless. I'm out of my house. I was, I was, uh, the sheriffs came at gunpoint and opened... Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I urge you also to write to the Attorney General. Thanks.
These, uh, uh, the next speakers will be Donald Wilson Bush, Michael Carrera, Ruth Sarnoff.
Good morning, honorable members of the city council, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Donald Wilson Bush, president of the Woodrow Wilson Legacy Foundation. I live in the eleventh district. And I am here to speak on behalf of all those in the middle class and the lower classes that will not or cannot speak for themselves. Over the last thirty years, across every social metric, the gap between the haves and the have-mores has continued to grow. And the middle class is beginning to disappear. I want to say thank you for your bold and excellent leadership I want to say thank you for your bold and excellent leadership on December 6th in passing the resolution to amend corporate personhood. And secondly, I would ask you to recommit yourself to the great cause of the middle class in this great country. The great poet once said, "Until one is committed, there is hesitancy; the chance to draw back always ineffectiveness. However concerning all matters of initiative and creativity, there is one elementary truth, the ignorance of which kills countless ideas and splendid plans." And that simple idea is this: At the moment one commits himself or herself to act, then providence follows too and all manner of incidents, meetings, and financial assistance comes your way that might otherwise never have occurred. So whatever you can do or dream you can, begin it now, for boldness has beauty, power, and magic in it. I ask you to leave this building today through the front door and look behind you at the words inscribed in marble: Let us have faith that right makes might. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next two speakers are Arnold Sachs and Matt Dowd.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. And once again, I've been here for approximately five years discussing the illegal parking of police vehicles and city vehicles outside. People think that it's a joke, but I've got a call from a Lieutenant Jerry Rodriguez from the Department of Ops calling my employer and asking my employer, "Why am I at City Hall complaining because it's upsetting the Chief of Police?" Once again, police department does no wrong. I ask you, gentlemen and ladies that are sitting here at this horseshoe, where does it stop? If you don't like the laws, change them. But the laws are on the book. I expect you, as our representatives, to uphold them and not allow some police officer, some politician to say, "Oh, well, let's just let it go." That's where the corruption starts. Where does it stop? I don't know. Rafael Perez felt that he had the right to do what he wanted and to break into people's homes and take what he wanted because he wore a badge that said LAPD. It's not right. You allow them to break all the city laws downtown, park where they want. Why? Because they have a badge on them. Why? Each one of yous here that I spoke to or your staff members basically say the same thing. We are not going to argue with LAPD. Shame on you. I thought it took guts to be a council member. Either you stand for what's right or you fall for what's wrong. It's a very simple policy. Right is right, wrong is wrong. And once again, if you don't like the laws, change them. Thank you.
Recall, Mr. Sachs. One moment, Mr. Sachs, please. Ruth Sarnoff is Ruth in the council chambers, Ruth Sarnoff, then Arnold Sachs, then Matt Dowd. Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Good afternoon, Council. I would like to join with some of my colleagues in thanking Councilwoman Garcetti and Rosendahl for their active support of this effort around more foreclosures. With one-third of the, all foreclosures in the country here in California, it's really a moment when we really need to move quickly. I want to bring to your attention, at the time that he was Assemblyman, Ted Lieu did work and produced a bill, it was AB 260. I'm not clear whether it ever in any form was approved by the governor at that time, but it's a year or two back, but there's a great video on, from the Speaker's Office of Member Services that might be a real good piece for all of you to get a chance to listen to. I would also like to support the, you writing a letter to State Attorney General Kamala Harris. And I'd also like to bring to your attention that there are places where you could do a referral for people who need help with loan modifications. There are two websites, yourhome.ca for California.gov, and also su casa.ca.gov in Spanish for people who need loan modification help. There's also a phone line for moratorium on foreclosure help, 888-995.HOPE. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth. Next, we have Arnold Sachs and Matt Dowd, please, after Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Well, based on the priorities that have occurred in the City Council, I have a suggestion for some people who are facing foreclosure. Use your house for adult film shoots and you'll get some results as the City Council has shown their ability to act on the need for condoms in adult films, but no need to act on the foreclosure dilemma facing the constituents in the city of LA. Maybe at the minimum, an ad hoc committee would be called for, like the ad hoc committee for the stadium. See how quickly they acted for that. Maybe in a minimum, you could come up with funding for foreclosure, people facing foreclosure, like you did to finance the construction of the new stadium. Oh, by the way, there's no team yet, just to keep you on point. That being said, that was quite a presentation on Friday by Councilman Weezer regarding the trolley in downtown LA. And it was really interesting listening to the film and the references to Portland. And if you paid really close attention, you would have heard the people in Portland talking about how the trolley in Portland had enhanced business improvement and redevelopment in the city. But in LA, it's the new population coming into downtown that is the push for the train. So it's a little bit different and not exactly quite what they said in the film that was produced, but everybody's cheering, so who hears the real facts? That also being said, I'm a little really disappointed in the fact that some of the speakers used, especially the person from the Transit Coalition, who advocates lying to the public. And let me read from your April, April 2010, their newsletter. One second, sir.
No, I'm going to give you five seconds.
At the board meeting of April, March 25th, the MTA allocated $690 million to the Gold Line Foothill Construction Authority. How could they do that when it wasn't even in existence?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Good to see you up there, looking good, the city of Los Angeles. First of all, I got to shout out to an Officer Fernandez down the bottom here, the security. Shout it out to me, how good I was, how easy, how easy it is for me to get in. I'm always good. I never have any problems with security or anything. Mark Antonio Grant's here too. Let me shout out to him. Good to see you. Haven't seen him for a while. I'm missing Bernie Parks. Where's Bernie? But anyway, she shouted out how good I was and, you know, it's such a pleasure for me to come through that security every day, never have any problems. I don't, you know, and never, I've never caused a disruption. I get the officers to, that, you know, when everyone else is speaking, you know, I just sit there and wait. You know, I'm not mad. Sometimes it takes a long time. But we came here with a genuine issue and then the first time, and then that will drag through the courts with the Shea butter and the incense on Venice Beach. But then the city came back in retaliation with an amplifier thing that affected performers. And then they stonewalled us. And so we filed in federal court and Zuma Dog is on the lawsuit and he got an injunction, I got an injunction, all those performers, and they knocked out the amplifier ban on Venice Beach. And then we put forward our claims for damages, including lost income with provable receipts. You know, my one was just shy of $50,000 of lost income for two and a half years. And the city turns around and offers $5,000 as a settlement offer. I mean, it's a total, it's just out of touch with reality. It's insulting.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Right now, I'd like to call on the councilman of the 11th District for a quick, little voice.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, as you know, our days are filled with multiple things we do for community. That's who we work for and we take it seriously. I have Lance Oshie standing right next to me now. He's been at 24 years with the city, 12 years with the Bureau of Street Services, the department's senior landscape architect and bureau leader. He's a bureau leader, is working with the neighborhoods. This is so key in developing community beautification projects. A tireless efforts in solving problems, a great communicator and a catalyst to bring the parties together in many ways to reach consensus. He's married and has three kids, but we have to single out heroes, and I consider him a hero. So I have a certificate, folks, that say, in recognition to Lance Oshie, is hereby awarded this certificate of appreciation for exemplary efforts and accomplishments which have been of value to the community and to the city of Los Angeles and which have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place in which to live. This is the guy, he's a hero to all of us, folks.
That's all right.
Because he makes a difference out there.
Thank you, Lance Oshie. Lance Oshie, thank you, thank you. Enrique and all the team, Enrique at Street Services. Ms. Perry.
I want to say a few quick words about Lance. You know, he is a very consummate professional, but what I wanted to say is, he worked on a project, or he's been working on this project, that has been transformative into improving the quality of life for Los Angelinos. And, you know, you may know it as APT, Automated Public Toilets. And we might laugh about it, but it has made a huge, huge difference in providing a better quality and a healthier quality of life for people in areas like Central City East or Skid Row. And we've been able to provide options for people who are utterly disenfranchised and to let them have a little bit of dignity because of the work that you've done. So I want to say thank you very much to you, Lance, and thank you for being so devoted to making public works relevant in our daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank everyone in the Bureau of Street Services. Thank you very much. Thank Crew 152 for their great work this weekend. Next, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President. Mr. Garcetti.
Just very briefly and under the close eye of the City Attorney, I know there are a lot of folks who came here today for work on foreclosures and I want to thank the woman who spoke at the end, that Hope Hotline that she mentioned was something the city of LA set up. We've served literally thousands of people, not just in LA but around the country. And this was before the foreclosure crisis came, that we tried to make sure both in English and Spanish, there were folks who could modify their loans. And that's been a critical, critical hotline for folks who still feel, right now, they know they're underwater. Call now, don't wait for tomorrow. And I know a lot of council offices have worked directly with banks to re, to modify those mortgages. And lastly, I certainly do, and I think many councilmembers do, stand with Kamala Harris in her actions at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, what's before us right now?
Mr. President, now that 12 members are present, there has been a request to reconsider item 23. That's in order.
With no objection, let's reconsider 23. All right, reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, that's before us? And we want to take it up right now?
Mr. President, we just adopted it.
Right now? That's how fast you are. Give Allen a big hand. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item number one, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, for one card. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, today is National Dress Like a Fascist Day. I'm here as Rick Santorum, but I'll erase that right away. HollywoodHighlands.org, come to us. Walsh Confidential, come to us. I like to point out, number one is a very important issue. If you want to know more about this public hearing on building and safety, which is doing an excellent job, cost of barricading all openings and cleaning fences and a lot, they generally do an excellent job. You don't get, I don't come up and say, "Oh, you're all a bunch of crux in your outfit." All that old white guy kind of, you don't get that from John Walsh, do you? When you do a good job, I tell you, and when the LA Times is racist, Jim Newton, I tell you.
Mr. President, he's not talking about item one.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Walsh, you don't need to scream in the microphone. Continue, continue with it. I'm running the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You, attorney, just stop heckling me. HollywoodHighlands.org, you are a disgrace.
I don't, I don't believe that. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Next item. Thank you very much. This is item, on this item here. Thank you. Hold on. Mr. Clerk, on this item, there's no speakers on the queue. We have the public comment.
Mr. President, there's been a request from the department to receive and file this matter.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
So ordered. Next item.
That brings us to item number six, called Special for Cards.
Howard Ragland, is that correct, Howard?
Ragland. Good morning.
I got Carrot Ragland and Howard Ragland, excuse me, two cards.
Thank you very much. Right. I believe I sent a letter to the City Council. I don't know if we had the opportunity to review it. Basically, the property at issue is a property that's owned by my family trust. As I indicated, we are willing to pay some of the fees, but I feel the fee should be mitigated and I've listed three main reasons. First of all, the notices were sent to my elderly mother who has Alzheimer's and she just didn't know what to do with the notices. By the time she presented them to us, the time to make the cure, the problem with the property had passed. Also, my brother had given them his home address and somehow the address was incorrect and never received the notices. Also, once I became aware of the situation, I requested invoices and I was told by Building and Safety that I could not receive the invoice. I had to go to their department. I'm a lawyer, a practicing lawyer. I had to be in court a lot of days. So bottom line, and also some of the problems at the property, I remember personally, I went to the police department and I was told there was nothing that they could do to help us with regard to the graffiti on the property or the homeless people who kept breaking into the fence and occupying our private property. So bottom line, we are willing to pay a fee, but we don't feel that the fee that's assessed is proper because of the mitigating factors. I don't know if my brother has any comments.
Thank you very much. We're going to ask you to complete your public comment, Mr. Ragland. We have staff from Building and Safety here as well, we're going to direct you to. Mr. Ragland?
No, yes.
Said it all. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to ask Building and Safety, have you met with them, Mr. Lara? Please meet with them. Thank you so much. Mr. Zein. Mr. Zein, your button is pushed. Good, it's clear. There's no speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, would you like to hold this matter on the desk?
Well, we're going to hold it for a little bit so they have a chance to talk over there. And then, Mr. Lara, after you complete your conversation, if you could advise us through our deputies. Thank you very much. Hold this on the desk. Next item.
That brings us to item number nine, called Special for Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we can take nine, 10, and 11 together, and this involves increasing the speed limit on Mason Avenue, also increasing the speed limit on Tampa, and increasing the speed limit on Roscoe, involves my district, also Mr. Engler's district, and also Mr. Carden's district. And what I'd like from the police departments in 45 days, a report back from the division that's going to be handling this and exactly what they plan to do to address the speeding problem, since we're increasing the speed limit from 35 to 40 miles an hour, that five-mile increase will cause cars to increase their speed down those roads. And what we then receive from the neighborhood councils is complaints about additional speeding. And the concern is, what is the police department, in specific the traffic division, going to do to address the enforcement on those particular thoroughfares? That's Mason, Tampa, and Roscoe. So we can get a report back in 45 days from Los Angeles Police Department, exactly what plan they have and what kind of results to have the folks comply with the new speed limits that are going to be able to be enforced by radar on those roadways. That'll be the request, Mr. President. So we request approval of nine, 10, 11 with that report back in 45 days.
Great.
Regarding the enforcement, exactly what they're going to do to implement a change other than put the radar sign up and not do any enforcement. We need to do something to address it.
Okay, good. It's fairly motioned, it's okay. Thank you, Mr. Zein. Words have been completed. You got that down, Mr. Clerk?
Sir, yes, sir.
No other speakers on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us now to item 20, called Special for Councilmember Zein.
Mr. Zein.
Mr. President, this came to the committee, Mr. Coretts, the personnel committee, and we had some issues that have been resolved. I spoke with the Director of Finance regarding this and I'm satisfied with the result, with the Inspector General's position in the Office of Finance, what they're going to be doing. I don't know if Mr. Coretts has any other questions, if not, to recommend approval for this particular position.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coretts?
Yes, the problem was with the revenue manager's positions duties. There were too much overlap with the new inspector general position that was being created for citywide collections. So they separated out the duties and I think they did a good job. The only, the only area that I would add to the inspector general's duties is I think they both should review best practices, and this only gives that duty to the revenue manager. Other than that, I would approve this as it's been presented.
Okay, thank you, members. There's no speakers on the queue. Discussion has taken place. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. Next item.
That brings us to item 22, called Special for Councilmember Zein.
Thank you once again. If we could have the General Manager of Building and Safety come forward, Mr. Overton.
And as he does come forward, we have one public comment, one public comment card. Armin, the Jared Ann, thank you. Take your time, come up and you can speak right now. Mr. Overton, if you'd be patient for a moment. Public comment card, thank you.
Respectable City Council members, do you follow Angelinos? Actually, I very much endorse this item 22 because this is a management committee report that concerns implementing reforms in Los Angeles Department of Safety, Department of Building and Safety, and to address public corruption problems. Actually, this report is very important for City Council members to realize that we might be taking certain measures, accountability measures. We should develop accountability measures in order to fight corruption in the Department of Building and Safety. As a couple of construction inspectors were actually caught, you know, by taking bribes, we've taken bribes lately, you know. And therefore, we might be creating condition of accountability and, you know, and those persons should be appointed by council members, you know, the only people of trust, people without criminal record or people without any, with impeccable reputations. without criminal record, or people without any impeccable reputations, would be allowed to take those positions. Corrupt individuals won't be able to get a chance to get to a sensible position of city safety inspectors, or building inspectors, which actually might involve corruption, might actually very much blemish the reputation of the city of Los Angeles as corrupt entity. And city government should do everything to, you know, eradicate corruption in this city, because otherwise, you know, federal attorneys will indict and prosecute all members of city government for breaking the law, or for on public corruption charges, on charges as well of allowing running criminal enterprise of harmful narcotic marijuana, for instance. And I believe that if a city council member sends things only the hard way, it's their problem, not mine. But actually, actually, if, you know, but...
Thank you very much. Mr. Butt Overman, please, center table.
So, what we had is a situation within the Department of Building and Safety where the FBI did an investigation, and some employees of the city of Los Angeles signed the Building and Safety were arrested for corruption. Butt Overman was put in that department to address those issues and recommend changes, implement changes so we could regain the public trust and confidence. We know that the Controller does audits, waste, fraud, and abuse. This was greater than waste, fraud, and abuse. This was downright corruption, taking bribes, et cetera. So, the new plan that the department's implemented is stricter guidelines, transfers, et cetera. If you can just explain what you're doing to clean up the house, and I want to recognize the good, honest employees at Building and Safety, but it only takes a few people to get involved in some illegal activity to taint an organization, a city. So, with your leadership and out of your executive team, I know you're taking great strides to improve the image, the reputation, and eliminate any type of illegal activity. So, if you could take it away, Butt, and explain to the council and the people of L.A. what you're doing as the General Manager.
Councilman Zine, thank you very much. Mr. President, member of the council, thank you very much. Nice to see you. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to come in and talk to you about the problems the department has faced, and the actions that we are taking to correct those problems and to try to make sure they don't happen again. And I particularly want to thank Councilman Zine for hosting a series of meetings in the Valley, in the West Side, different parts of the city, so that we could get out to the public and talk very forthrightly about the problems that we've encountered and the measures that we are taking to improve them. I think the only way we can really deal with this is to be very forthright and put on the table what went wrong and how we have corrected it. I hope the city clerk has distributed to you a progress report that we provided to the chairs of the various council committees who have been helping us on this. I'll very quickly just hit some of the highlights of the remedial actions that we have taken that I think are going very, very well. I'm really pleased and surprised how fast we have been able to implement some of the reforms. Specifically, I'd highlight the reestablishment of the Internal Investigations Unit. The department used to have an internal unit. It was dissolved a number of years ago. We have reinstituted it. We have hired an excellent investigator, so we now have a person with investigative skills available to us, an LAPD graduate, 22-year Law Enforcement Department of Justice. She is now reported to work. She is paid for by the Building and Safety Department, so it's not a burden on the general fund, but she reports to the Personnel Department, to Maggie Whelan, in order to have independence.
She has a unique name for that position?
Martha Supernor.
There you go.
She's Supernor. So, we're very pleased that we were able to get that person the job identified, the person hired and on the job already. The GPS tracking system, we have purchased in excess of 400 cell phones. All of our employees had cell phones, but now they all have GPS-equipped cell phones. My phone, all the way through the entire department, they all have GPS tracking system on them now. We are in the process of meeting and conferring with the employees, and so we do not have all of the procedures for how it's going to work ironed out yet. We're meeting with the employees now, but the phones are being, have been purchased and are being distributed as we speak. Another one that I would just quickly highlight for you is the performance audit. When we discovered these first problems, we decided we need to do an audit of all of our employees. As a result of that audit of all of our employees, we have had three more, two more employees terminated and two more employees retire. So, we've had now six separations from service, four through termination, two from accepting retirement. And then, the last item I would just quickly highlight for you is the mandatory reassignments. The department, again, used to have a rotation system. The rotation system was dropped a number of years ago. We have reinstituted the rotation system so that we would like to get to the point where all of our employees are rotated once every five years. This first year, since we haven't done it a number of years, we rotated about 25% of our employees. And again, it's a double-edged sword. We have to make sure that we have consistency for our customers, but we also have to make sure that the relationships don't become too cozy. So, Mr. President, members of the council, Chairman Zine, those are the items I would highlight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any other aspect of the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Overman. Now, next on the queue is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to thank you for your hard work. We have this matter in a joint committee hearing, and one of the issues that I raised, and it pertains to how we are looking at our current condition given the foreclosures, our role as the city officials in conducting reviews of our buildings to address public safety matters. Yet, we have this environment, but because of the few cases of the individuals who abuse that privilege and that service, there's an environment out there that, just how deep does this go? So, I think we've taken, needed measures to start creating a structure that provides heightened supervision and understanding of how time is used. It still begs the question, to what degree are there any kind of collusion with unscrupulous characters in real estate and financing that are displacing people? And so, my understanding is that we're going to be doing everything in our power to make sure that our behavior as a city is to essentially address the folks on a case-by-case basis, and that we're not creating environments where we are furthering the harm and abuse by those unscrupulous characters who would push people out of their homes in that process as they go through those challenges. And I just want to put that on the record, because I know this is a conversation we had on the record. I'm careful how we're addressing it, because we still have to go through our investigations and our audits, but I just wanted to address that point, because it's a very real issue, and it's happening to thousands of people in the city.
Well, it's a very real issue, and you're right, Councilman. You have brought it up at the committee, and we appreciate your thoughts on it, your support on it. It's compounded, and I don't mean to whine, you probably get enough whiners, but it's compounded by the budget problems we face, that we have taken, we've lost 270 positions in a department that started about 1,000 employees, so we have taken a big hit on our enforcement abilities. We are doing everything we can, particularly with regard to code enforcement, and the areas that you talk about are code enforcement as opposed to building inspection, construction inspection. And we'll be talking to you more during the budget process about code enforcement, because you're absolutely right. Code enforcement is essential to protecting people, to protecting neighborhoods, the broken windows theory, that the best way to deal with blight is to not let blight grow in the first place. So, we're putting a lot of emphasis on that, and what we have done with the council's support has been increasing our fees on the scuff loss, so that the violators are paying for the fences, not the general fund and not John Q. taxpayer, but we're doing everything we can to maximize, you know, those services with the resources we have. I know my time is up. I'll push my butt again, but I just want to make sure we follow through and address it again. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Look, in my district, there's been a tremendous outcry and suspicion about your department. It's reached a fever point. Every day, I get an email from someone in the housing world who tells me terrible stories. I even know off the record, guys who are afraid to talk on the record for retribution reasons. One gentleman who owns 15 different complexes went on and on with me with stuff that frankly, if any of it is true, that person needs to be fired and maybe prosecuted for something. So, I just want you to know that whatever we do to clear up either the impression of corruption, or the misperception of corruption, or the reality of corruption, has to be done. And just for people watching this to know, what we're doing today is 10 quick things: reestablishing an internal investigation unit, performance audit of inspectors and engineers, use of GPS tracking tools, review hiring standards, background investigation practices for new employees, employee evaluations, employee training, ethics training, supervisor training practices, financial disclosure, Form 700, mandatory rotation between the Inspection and Code Enforcement Bureau. Now, that's a mouthful for me, but I'm going to tell you, if you follow every one of those points, and you report back to us, the credibility of that department that you guys manage will come back. But right now, the credibility is down the toilet, and it is critical for us to clear up and clean up whatever we need to do. Do I have a commitment that these points are what you're going to follow?
Absolutely, sir. You have a total commitment, not only myself, but of our management team and all of our employees. All of our employees have been working very carefully. The employees recognize there's a problem here, and it's to their advantage to be a part of cleaning up, to distance themselves from the bad apples. And I would urge you, if you have a person with specific complaints, the idea of the independent investigator is to be outside the retribution, the fear. I don't think there is retribution, but there's always that fear of retribution.
Oh, yeah.
So, Martha Supernor is the special investigator, works for the Personnel Department, paid for her best, totally independent investigator. Please, 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 refer people to her. We're going to take all of those very, very seriously.
Appreciate that. I want to thank David Zandheiser from the LA Times that actually put it out there and got us going on it for good journalism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Englander?
Thank you. Thanks for coming to council and preparing all these wonderful ideas that are being incorporated. Mr. Rosenthal said his district gets a lot of these complaints, fears of retribution. I would say that this is citywide. In fact, I get a lot of complaints. One of the biggest complaints are not just from contractors and builders, but they're also from businesses on code enforcement. And the fact that when we've got code enforcement officers out there, or we get inspectors out there, they send an inspector one day, and they find 10 things wrong. They send a different inspector to follow up a week later, and they find 10 other things wrong, and those 10 things were existing the first time they were out there. And it's constantly delayed and pushed back, and there is this fear of retribution. There is this fear that's been out there. The worst part of that is the customer service has gotten so bad with the department. This is one of the biggest complaints that I get, is it is just a few apples, but those apples have spread. The seeds have germinated, and they're growing, and these problems are growing. I'm hearing about it more now than ever, particularly on code enforcement, when we're going out there. It's the enforcement officers, many of them, and not all of them, are rude, they're crude, they're worse than friendly, and this coming from a general manager who has a background in being extremely business-friendly, who's done a phenomenal job in Burbank, and coming here, and other hats that you've worn. I'm incredibly disappointed that this hasn't been addressed, and there hasn't been an immediate action to correct it. We've had major incidents where people come out and the building inspectors say immediately, "If you don't like it, then move." I got a real problem with that. I've called directly to ask for input from you. I never got a return phone call from you, and that's what people are experiencing in my district as well. So, I'd like to see how all that, I haven't seen a plan for that, and I'd like to see how all that's being addressed as well. The challenges, I know, are tough, particularly with staff cuts, but we've taken that in every department, and they seem to be doing a pretty good job in others. So, I'd like to see customer service completely changed around and focused on in code enforcement. Thank you.
If I may, Councilman, thank you very much, and I profusely apologize. If you ever called me and I didn't get back to you, I profusely apologize for that. Somebody's going to get chewed out as soon as I get back to the office. And we have been dealing with the issue, and you made two things, code enforcement and building inspection. We do the performance enhancement program, and we're going to be putting out an evaluation of the performance enhancement program in the next 30 days. I'll be very, very happy to share that with you. Please, please, tell me, and I'm sorry if we didn't, please, please, tell me when you get these complaints.
Don't chew anybody out. That may be a violation of health and safety codes, Butt, but anyway, just talk to them and let them know that. Let's call on Mr. Coretts right now. Mr. Paul Coretts of the 5th District, you're on the lineup, right here, Mr. Paul Coretts.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had one quick question. LEDOT had a similar effort to track some of their equipment, and the result, as I recall, was somewhat disastrous. A lot of the equipment wound up in storage. We, I think we were renting it and paying multiple times what it would have cost us to buy it. We had all kinds of problems. Have you looked at those problems so that you can use best practices and avoid falling into the same trap, where we spend a lot of money, most of it winds up in storage, and it's never actually implemented?
Well, I can guarantee you, that's not going to happen to us. We have talked to a variety of departments, including the police department, about how best to utilize geo-tracking. So, we are trying, you learn as much from people's mistakes as you learn from things that they do right. So, we are conferring with other departments to make sure that we have the best practices, and we're very confident that we have purchased and are distributing a system that will be very, very manageable.
Well, if you haven't looked at DOT and their mistakes, you probably should take a look at that, and that's just what I'm trying to flag for you, because they attempted to do the same thing and cost the city a lot of money, and it was a relatively worthless effort because it wasn't handled properly. So, if you can review what they did wrong and make sure you don't fall into the same pitfalls, I think that'll be very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. For Mr. Zine, for a second time.
Well, I think we can maybe close on this. The attitude of the employees, the demeanor of the employees, the honesty of the employees, and it's not just Building and Safety that had a problem. We had a problem with water and power, a problem with Housing Authority, a problem with Department of Transportation, and when these start to pile up, the public looks at us and says, "Are you folks a bunch of dishonest municipal employees, or are you honest and have integrity?" So, it goes from Building and Safety to all the other departments. I know you've taken the bull by the horns, and you've tightened up these regulations, and if someone has an issue, who do they contact? Is there an 800 number? Is there a complaint number that we can refer them to where they can have that complaint investigated in a fair, impartial manner?
Yes, we post that on our webpage. We post it on our newsletter. The number I'll give you right, well, and we'll circulate that. The number I would give you right now is 818, or, excuse me, 213-482-6800. But we post it, a hotline. We have the City Controller's Wasting a Few hotline. We post that. We post the FBI's hotline. So, if a person, again, if they're fearful of retribution, we post the FBI's hotline where they can go directly to the FBI and report it.
Okay, because when I read that article about the FBI investigating Los Angeles city employees, I know your department already started an investigation, when the FBI comes into a city and starts investigating, people start saying, "If the local agency can't handle it, how out of control is the situation?" And again, it's not just Building and Safety, but these other departments, these scandals, and municipal employees, you understand, they're there for the people. The people aren't there for them. We're there here to serve the people in all capacities. So, employees of LA City need to understand that. And again, no disrespect to the honest, hard-working employees, but when it starts to hit different departments, the public starts to become very critical, and that doesn't help any of us who are here trying to make it a better Los Angeles. So, I appreciate what you've done. We'll get reports back periodically from your department, make sure everything's going well. I know that we want to increase the building, we want to increase the economy, we want to increase the job opportunity, and no matter what the economy is, no matter how hard it is to get employees to go out there and do the thing, they're getting a paycheck, and they're there to do a job for the people of Los Angeles. So, we want to keep that in mind. But again, I commend you for taking that department, correcting it, keeping it clean, keeping it above board, and hopefully, this will be the end to any negative spotlight on the Department of Building and Safety with you and your colleagues. And Dave Laura, what do you have to say for yourself? Because you and the lady are both wearing pink, so you must be saying something today.
I follow my boss's lead and, of course, your lead, and we appreciate the time and efforts that all of you have contributed to this.
All right, thank you. And I know, I think you're second in command, so...
And we keep him here, so please, you know, we won't chew, because it's health and safety.
Dave's good. Anytime we have an issue, we come to Dave. But again, we want to assure the public that we're moving forward, and I want to commend Councilman Garcetti, who helped bring us about in the ordinance that, or the changes that we made with the motion. So, again, thank you, congratulations. Hopefully, we can put this negative to an end and move forward in a positive arena. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you. Mr. Butterover, sit back down now. Sit back down now.
Thank you, Council President. I do want to thank Councilmember Zein as Chair of the Audits and Government Efficiency Committee for putting a spotlight on this issue. On your report, you state that we'll be reestablishing an internal investigations unit. And in quotes, it says, "Receive and review complaints as well as audit inspections and other practices to guard against abuse and corruption within the department." Now, the point I was trying to get to in my previous dialogue was, and I'll be just blunt, will we be structured so that we can understand any relationships our inspectors may have with banks? Are we going to be able to understand how our staff is conducting itself so that we are not furthering or enhancing the anxieties of a person who's trying to survive in their house? And they're going through foreclosure process, and yet you have, out of the blue, inspectors coming in, putting more pressure on this person to get out of the house, knowing that the banks are also part of that pressure. There's a line of corruption there that is very possible. I'm not saying anyone did that, but how do we guard and protect our constituents from environments like that? Is our investigation structured so we can determine if there's any unusual, awkward activity or that which might lead to that type of collusion?
Yes, sir. And I know you and I have discussed this, and I understand the issue because our code enforcement is complaint-driven. I see Mr. Guthrie here in the Housing Department, and they have a systematic code enforcement where they have a methodology for going to different units at different times. Our system is totally complaint-driven for single-family homes and commercial properties. So if a person doesn't complain, then we don't follow up. The opportunity for abuse there is what if there was a relationship with a bank that wanted to use us as a tool by which to further their cause? So you've brought this to my attention. I think it's an extremely valid point. And we're working on some different approaches to code enforcement where we can be more systematic about it, not in the same way that LAHD is, but in a more community-based way so that we know it's not a lending officer who's calling the complaint, just like we have the problem with the next-door neighbor. They have a feud and then they call us, you know? And one side turns on the other and uses us as a tool. We could be used by the banks in that way. I understand what you're saying, and we are working on systems to guard against that, to make sure that doesn't happen.
When that comes together, could you share that with my office? Or maybe we could, just to reinforce and enhance confidence in our public, because now we have that, we need to play out that role. Given the negativity that's arisen from this, given the investigation, the type of coverage we've had, you know, folks are concerned. And I'm not sure who they're really talking to. So once we get that and as long as it doesn't defeat or compromise your ability to track and enforce good personnel, it's something I think we should get some feedback on.
That's an excellent point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. LaRue is quite familiar as we've talked a bit about the case that's currently pending with the unpermitted third floor on top of residential units in 9th District in South L.A. And I don't need to talk about the specifics of that case right now because it's already underway and the people are being located. But what concerns me about this case is we move forward with reforms that, one, that might not be the only type of case that we see in areas where people are at risk or intimidated or don't know what a code violation looks like. And so what I want to know is, on a going-forward basis, as you move forward on that particular investigation, if you can report back as part of your package of reforms on how we can prevent other situations like that happening. An unpermitted third floor that causes the structure to put everybody who lives in it at risk. I understand the outflow system for the toilets is just beyond our comprehension, how ridiculous it is and how it puts people's health and safety at risk, just to give a few examples. So I'd like, as part of that, if you can report back on this particular case, what we've learned from this case and how we can implement what we've learned from this case on a citywide basis. Because, you know, I don't know how many permits he got for some of the work that he did, and we'll find out through the course of the investigation, but to have the boldness to put a third story on a structure, to put the whole structure at risk and everybody in it, and to think that you could get away with something like that is really incomprehensible. And so I think I need to know the level of city engagement in that process, where the permitting process took us, and how we can change that in the future.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's an excellent point. I think the relationship that building and safety has with the Housing Department has always been good, but this lesson has driven home to us. We need to make it better, and we're working specifically on that. And we'll be bringing back information on exactly what we've done to better, even better coordinate the relationship between housing and building and safety. That was an egregious case. An absolutely staggering case.
Yeah, it's a staggering case.
Ms. Perry, we have Mr. Rosendahl now. Mr. Bill Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment that I'd like to get some feedback on. You know the 11th District and you know how active my constituents are. They're active on every level of community. And not only do they get active publicly, but they vote and all of that. There is some of them who are very upset that we're not enforcing building and safety rules. Some of it is like overhead fences. And I have a real problem with the law we have in place because in certain neighborhoods and certain situations and in historical perspective, the height is higher than that. You can just walk down half a dozen different streets and you can find it. And that's always a contentious issue. And when somebody rats on somebody, then you go out and deal with it. And even on that block, there might be 10 others, but we're focused on the one complaint that we got. Then there's other stories, and many of you know Andy Durley, who I might be talking about in one particular spot, that makes a big deal about where the garbage cans are in public space or not, or the separation between a garage and the this and the that. How do you feel about the enforcement strategy? Are you complaint-driven? And how do you deal with some of these laws that I think are not necessarily in the best interest of anybody? I know it's a challenge.
Well, it's a challenge. The laws that are not in the best interest of anybody would be up to you. I mean, you write the laws. We enforce the laws that you write. But I am, and I am working on trying to find a better way to do code enforcement because I have, in the time that I have been here, concluded that I think there are deficiencies in the complaint-driven system. The complaint-driven system can be one neighbor using us as a tool against another neighbor. And maybe there's a more egregious problem on a different street, but it's only the squeaky wheel that gets the oil. If somebody complains on this street, we go. If somebody doesn't complain on the other street, we don't go. And that problem might be more egregious. So we are trying to develop, and we will bring you back to you shortly, a plan for a more strategic approach to code enforcement rather than just complaint-driven. Complaint-driven's been in this department for a number of years. And I, you know, given my time here, I've reached the same conclusion you have. There are some deficiencies in that that we need to figure out.
I appreciate that. Bless you for that. I look forward to your report back on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Obermeyer, appreciate it, all the staff. This is very important. Make sure that information goes out about your reform and continue the work that you're on this matter. No other speakers in there? So let's...Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, we have a note and file from the Planning and Land Management Committee.
All right, let's open the roll there on that one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Note and file. Next item. If I could ask the representative for building and safety, did item six get solved to the satisfaction? Please let us know. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item 24. Called special for Councilmember Zein and Cards.
On the cards here, Matt Dowd, Arnold Sacks. Matt Dowd, Arnold Sacks. No public comment. Cards, speakers in attendance. We close the public comment. Mr. Zein.
Yes, sir.
On this item.
Which one?
The one you chose to push and call special.
Number 22.
This is Traffic Enforcement Program grant for the Los Angeles Police Department.
All right. Number 24, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program grant. It's a $2 million grant. I just wanted to inform my colleagues that this $2 million grant is going to give 80 sobriety checkpoints throughout the city of Los Angeles, 52 DUI saturation patrols, 12 court stings. And the court stings are rather unique, and they follow the convicted DUI violators out of court, get back in the car and drive away. 12 motorcycle safety details, 12 speed enforcement details, 12 red light enforcement details, and 12 multi-agency avoid checkpoint L.A. County. So it's a cooperative effort with LAPD and other agencies. They're also going to spend $1,200 for a vehicular homicide course. And it's going to purchase a total station, one total station for a DUI checkpoint and three sobriety checkpoint trailers. In addition, 80 laser radar devices. So this $2 million grant is going to provide not only DUI checkpoints, but hopefully make our roads safer throughout the city of Los Angeles. And about 40% of those checkpoints are going to be in the San Fernando Valley, and they determine that from the reports where the DUI incidents are taking place. So it's a great expenditure, $2 million. It's a grant from also traffic safety, so no expense to the taxpayers. And this hopefully will enhance the road safety in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
So you request an approval on this one? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander.
Clarify one thing for the record. And in fact, it's stated here where it says here that it's for driver's license checkpoints, and it's not. State law did change January 1st that driver's license checkpoints can't be at DUI location checkpoints. So those who are unlicensed drivers, so they're aware, under state law, January 1st, if you're stopped at a DUI checkpoint, they will not be impounding your vehicle under state law. So you don't have to worry about that at a DUI checkpoint. So I just wanted to let the record state that this grant was written prior to that law taking effect. And so the funds will still be used for all those other changes. I just wanted to put that out there for the public. So thanks for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. And thank you, Mr. Englander, for all your work on the Public Safety Committee and Mr. Zein as well. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I've been informed by building and safety that the matter has been discussed and resolved, so we can move forward on item six. Takes out six right now.
Very good, sir. Would you like to open the roll for item number six?
Yes. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
So ordered. Next item.
Item 32, called special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, Ms. Pearlman, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks is not here. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or just Google Walsh Confidential. He's doing an excellent job acting President Labange. This is a bill by Alex Padilla filed on Friday the 13th. It's a stay of execution for the CRA. And it is, in fact, going to die because Brown, our governor, has said he is not going to delay the funeral. But let's point out that Alex Padilla's brother, Akli Padilla, works for the CRA down here in Los Angeles. So he has a bill which is a conflict of interest to extend his brother's job for four or five months so he can make another $40,000 or $50,000. We will not allow this to happen. On February 1st, we will celebrate Drop Dead CRA Day right here in council chambers. We ask you all to attend. There will be no reprieve. Born 1945 in Sacramento, CRA died February 1st, 2012, in Los Angeles. And we are all celebrating. And the place that everybody is celebrating the death of the Community Redevelopment Agency, a racist agency, is at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, where we're getting over 11,000 hits a day. I just want to say that I speak here in memory of Nick Stewart, who Ebony Showcase was stolen by him, from him, by the CRA. HollywoodHighlands.org, Kill the Padilla Bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Good night, Ms. Pearlman in Van Nuys City Hall.
Anyway, I wanted to make one correction. I wanted to say that it wasn't just...it wasn't in the mayor's, the Castes, I believe. It's the whole city council, including Eric Arsetti. I just wanted to make that correction. Anyway, I'm totally against CRA. I want you to make that clear. If anybody thinks I'm for the CRA, I'm totally against the CRA. Drop Dead CRA will now be extended to April 15, 2012. How poetic, Tax Day. That what won't go away? Taxes and the CRA. Our city would not be in the shape it is if the city council did not approve so many CRA projects. Changing the state is done to save many more projects. We had...we need to stop the CRA. People should not have their homes foreclosed. Many are losing houses, banks are responsible. We should foreclose the CRA. February 2nd should be Drop Dead CRA and not April 15th. And no completing old projects either. We don't need to delay it till April 15, 2012. And I don't believe the CRA is a racist problem. I believe they're totally against everybody. They're totally against minorities and white people. So we need to stop the CRA. And I hope that there really is going to have a funeral for the CRA, because that's one area when I wouldn't mind seeing going away. Fee waivers and the CRA, that would be great in such a short period of time. But we have to also remember, we can't just go back and complete all the projects that will be keeping the CRA for 20 years to complete projects that were done, approved before, like July 1st of last year, I believe that is. So we need to stop the CRA. And let's stop the CRA today, though I guess now it's going to be April 15, 2012, because I know they already voted yes. All right.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment. There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Next item.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us to item 33, called special for Cards.
Okay, we have Mr. Walsh, Ms. Pearlman, Arnold Sacks, and Armin Norradigian.
No one wants to talk about it. No one. Unanimous vote. This concerns another bill, the Steinberg bill. It's the son of Frankenstein bill, Padilla's bill being the Frankenstein bill. This, again, is trying to reanimate the CRA. But there will be no reprieve. We will win. We have the governor on our side, despite the fact that, oh, here, Mr. Rosendahl's not here, attacked personally the governor about CRA. I'm telling you right now, I went to the meeting of the CRA on the last day. It was the most bizarre meeting I have ever gone to, public meeting. I'm in year 42, 42 years of this. Go to HollywoodHighlands.org or Google Drop Dead CRA Day to hear what happened when I
Go to HollywoodHighlands.org or Google Drop Dead CRA Day to hear what happened when I went to the last CRA meeting. It wasn't like a funeral. It was like a morgue after a major disaster. And if you think they're smirking over there and they're going to get through, no. Too many of our activists want to lose, and they are defeatists. When you win, trumpet your victory. We did this for all of the people, but I'm telling you as a white man, it's funny how other white people defend the CRA when it comes to race. The poorest people are minorities, and the CRA attacked the poorest people. And I want you to watch the video, it's available, of the last meeting, when I toasted the CRA with Jim Jones Kool-Aid and invited him to take a drink. And when I tried to leave the meeting, an anonymous CRA staff member came up to me, threatened to beat the hell out of me, and then he attacked my mother. And you know what I said to him? Let's step outside, and I'll beat the crap out of you. And he ran away, because we're the winners, and I may be 68 years old, and you can attack me when you're 35 or 36, but I stand up for myself. Death to the CRA! All right, thank you very much, Mr. Pearlman, Ms. Pearlman, and Van Nuys City Hall. Ms. Pearlman.
Pear, like a pear.
Pearlman, Ms. Pearlman, excuse me. Call me Labonge, it's okay.
Okay. Anyway, I wanted to tell everybody that I don't like this, that this is trying to save this, that agency, the CRA agency. Myself and Maryam Foglerov always putting down the CRA, because here's our two white people besides John Walsh, that are totally against the CRA. They have, and I believe they probably have hurt a lot of minorities, and they probably are worse to the poorest agency. So we need to have the Drop Dead CRA, and let's get rid of the CRA projects, and let's not do anything of the Steinberg or Padilla trying to save the CRA, because we need to get rid of the CRA. Certainly, we were able to exist before the CRA came, and I believe we can exist with the CRA gone now. So that's all I have to say right now. Let's drop, Drop Dead CRA, and I'm looking forward to the time that we can all celebrate, and maybe me and Maryam and John Walsh and everybody who hates the CRA all get together, and let's celebrate the end of the CRA. Let's know you're going to vote yes on this project, because the, because I believe that you decided to vote yes on it yesterday or a week ago, and we just, you already know how you're going to vote before the public comes in there, and I don't believe the public ever changes any of your decisions. So I know you're going to vote yes, so close the roll, tabulate the vote, 12 eyes. Anyway, I'm against the CRA, and I'm against extending it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that we're moving the CLA reports for 33, or it's just a motion?
Mr. Clerk, could you advise us, please?
The CLA reports were circulated today, and if the action out of committee were, or if there was waived out of committee with just a motion, I want to make sure that the CLA reports are moved, which is consistent with the motions.
Mr. President, the resos are before council.
Including the CLA report.
Including the CLA report?
Which adopts those resolutions? Absolutely, sir.
Okay, and that was the same with 32, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. Could you open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Sir, that brings us to item 39, called Special for Councilmember Weezer. Let me advise you that there is an amending motion, Weezer Reyes, 39A, that has been distributed and is before council.
And is there any public comment required by law?
Yes, sir, there are cards on this matter.
Okay, Mr. Weezer, let me take the cards first. Donna Pearman. Donna Pearman. Donna is gone. I don't see her out there in Van Nuys City Hall.
No, no, here, here, here I am. Okay, let's see, see, this is on 39.
One minute, one minute.
Okay. Okay. I'm just getting this thing over here. This sounds like it's also, okay. Oh, darn it. Okay, hold on for a second. Okay, anyway, I'm totally against the CRA, and that does hit white people. White people are also, and in the, yeah, this is talking about the CRA and a big bunch of money over here. Anyway, I'm, it also does hurt poor people. So this sounds like another extension of the CRA, and I wanted to tell John Walsh there's a lot of poor white people. So CRA hurts a lot of different people over here, and let's see how much this one costs. Oh, here's one over there, a $1 million project over here, $1,200,000. So it looks like the CRA is contending to help hurt us, so I know that the city council will see exactly where this $1 million is going to, and this is why we are still spending money on the CRA. So I'm curious.
Thank you very much, Donna. Have a good day. And next item would be Mr. Sacks. He's not here. Ruth Sardoff. Thank you, Ruth.
Good afternoon, council. I came today without realizing this was going to be on the agenda that the hearing, but I do have some thoughts about this. I've followed community redevelopment agency activities for a very long time, and I think there was always a myth about a community redevelopment agency, that somehow if you anchored big, huge projects, that in reality usually displaced lots of small homeowners and lots of small businesses, but somehow it was going to attract and build something around it. So this fantastic amount of money went in to very large construction, engineering, architectural projects, and I'm happy to see that the money from this, if I've been following, also the governor's budget some, and to see that, that some of this money is going to perhaps help with educating the young people in Los Angeles as well as throughout California. And I hope some consideration will be taken about the fact that we have literally thousands of unused units, both commercial, industrial, and homes and apartments throughout the city, where there have been rental foreclosure, there have been home foreclosures, all kinds of foreclosures, and we ought to think about how we might redo this in a way that we begin to put, to make these homes available to the homeless. And if we could come up as a city with a comprehensive plan for ending homelessness that covered food, housing, medical care, mental health, it'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That completes public comment. Mr. Weezer, the 14th.
Thank you, Mr. President. A amending motion has been circulated as requested by the Community Redevelopment Agency. Thank you.
Is anybody here for the agency? Okay, the amending motion has been circulated. Mr. Clerk, no speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered. Mr. Reyes.
Based on some very recent news, can I have item 30 reconsidered? I continue it one day.
All right, all right. So there's a request to reconsider item 30. Let's open.
Excuse me, item 30 was continued to the 31st. You'd like to reconsider it and go?
I need one day instead.
Excuse me, just get clarification. Was recur, continued to the 31st? Is that okay, Mr. Reyes?
I just need one day, not one week.
Not one week. So could you continue it to tomorrow? That's what our request is.
Mr. President, first, we'd need a vote to reconsider the matter.
Vote to reconsider the matter. Let's reconsider the matter. Any objections to reconsidering 31? Open the roll. Close the roll. No objections.
Twelve eyes.
That was item 30. Thank you.
All right, do we have it correct now? I said it right. Item 30, I said it wrong. Now, Mr. Reyes, your formal request is to continue it one day. So, all right, members, we're going to continue this one day till tomorrow. Is that okay with you, Mr. Clerk?
Sir, it really doesn't matter what's okay with me. It's the will of the body.
Just trying to give you a little love, Alan. Alan, that's all right.
Thank you, sir. Tomorrow is January 25.
All right, good. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. All right, we got that matter.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Any announcements, members? Any announcements? No announcement this time. Any adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions? We see one. I ask all members and our guests here in chambers to rise. To have everybody's attention, will you stand in a German in reverence to those who went before us? Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three adjourning motions. The first one is a detective that I worked with, Detective Phil Van Ader. Passed away January 20th. Complication cancer, 70 years old, 28-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department, where he spent most of his career as a homicide detective before retiring in 1995. Through his many years of service and hundreds of closed investigations, most famous and known as elite investigator in 1994 murders of Nicole Brown Simpson and Ronald Goldman, his testimony in the pursuit of O.J. Simpson trial, and his 1977 investigation arrest of film director Roman Polanski in the lobby of the Beverly Wilshire Hotel in Beverly Hills that kicked off international legal saga that escalated when the director fled to France after he was convicted. Christopher Darden, prosecutor in the Simpson trial, said in an emotional interview Sunday that Phil Van Ader did his job the best he could, and he was a fine detective, one of the best. Detective Phil Van Ader had planned to retire in late 1994, but instead spent more than a year in the middle of the Simpson trial, while his name was often featured in headlines and his face was a common sight on cable news shows. Once he did actually retire, he continued his service to the people of Los Angeles as a consultant for the cold case murders with the police department while living part-time on a farm in Indiana, where he served for four years as a deputy sheriff in the town of Viva with a population of 1,683. He enjoyed the slow pace there and life away from the big city. Commented to a reporter once, "It's 180 degrees different from living in a large city. It's a lifestyle that I want to adopt." Before joining law enforcement, West Virginia native, served the United States Army. Grandfather known as Dutch, among friends and as a super cop among colleagues, Detective Van Ader rose to the elite robbery homicide division of the LAPD early in his career and earned a reputation for meticulous, tough-minded work. Services are planned for Wednesday at Forest Lawn Memorial Park in Hollywood. A fund has been established in Van Ader's name with the Los Angeles Police Memorial Foundation. I had the pleasure of working with Detective Van Ader and can tell you how good a man he was, how well he served our city and police department, and how much he will be missed. Hope we will all give him the highest honor and a journey on his behalf for this invaluable contribution to our city. Survived by his brother Joe, wife Rita, their daughter Donna, their son Matthew, who's an LAPD officer, and five grandchildren. May he rest in peace, Detective Phil Van Ader.
And Mr. Zine, all members on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Captain John Egan from West Valley Division, his mom passed away. Kathleen Patricia Hilt passed away December 19th at the age of 91. Born in Georgia, April 22, 1920, to a U.S. Army quartermaster, lived in many places in the United States, ultimately settled in Oklahoma, where she attended college, majored in music, used her passion and talent as a member of the church choir for years in practice of her strong Catholic faith. It was there in Oklahoma where she met her soon-to-be husband, who was serving our country in the Army Air Corps during World War II. The two would have children who survived Captain John Egan of Los Angeles Police Department, West Valley Division, and Peggy Hernandez. May Kathleen Patricia Hilt rest in peace. And my final journey motion for Mary Hawkins, passed away January 18th. Mary Josephine Hawkins, a resident of Los Angeles for 80 years, beloved mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and GOP matriarch of the San Fernando Valley, passed away Wednesday, January 18th at the age of 97. Been involved in Republican politics for half a century, serving as president of various clubs and an advisor to countless campaigns. Her house was always open to Republican candidates who wanted to organize campaigns or raise funds. She was a gold card member, meaning having over 25 years of service of the National Federation Republican Woman. She was a founding member of the West Valley Republican Club, also had the distinction of being a member of the Lincoln Club of Los Angeles County longer than anyone else at the time of her passing. Always supported Republican candidates and elected officials in the valley. Every campaign season, she was a major contributor to San Fernando Valley Republican Headquarters. Born in Wagner, South Dakota, she moved with her family to Santa Monica at the age of 14. She and her husband, ultimately Lee Hawkins, a former LAPD officer, had children Sandra and Jim. Mary is an example of all of civic engagement and leadership. Enthusiastically assumed responsibly for making her community a better place, made herself a resource to do. She led by example. She made a difference. May she rest in peace. Services for Mary will be held on Saturday, January 28, 11:00 a.m., at Prince of the Peace Church in Woodland Hills. The address is 57 Rudnick Avenue, and all are welcome. She was a wonderful lady of the San Fernando Valley. May she rest in peace, Mary Hawkins. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, members. And members, I ask, I know, oh, Mr. Kerkorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I'm sad to report that the mother of LAPD Captain Peter Whittingham, Lynette Barrett, passed away on January 16th at the age of 86, of natural causes, in her home in Montego Bay, Jamaica, and I would respectfully request that the council adjourn in her memory today. Mrs. Barrett was a retired Montego Bay city employee, where she served as an office assistant for a Montego Bay city council member. She was a deeply religious person who attended church every day, participated in the church choir, and was a deacon at her Baptist church. She was a very humble but proud woman, and she took great pride in all of her children, her grandchildren and her great-grandchildren, and especially her son Peter, who rose to the rank of captain here in the Los Angeles Police Department in the North Hollywood Division. She came from humble background and was never formally educated, and she emphasized education for her kids, and so she was very proud of her grandson, who is now obtaining a PhD in linguistics. She lived in Los Angeles with Peter for 10 years, but then moved back to Montego Bay four years ago to be more active in her church and closer to her grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Funeral services will be held February 5 in Montego Bay. She is survived by her eight children, including Captain Whittingham, 36 grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild. She had a very blessed life, and I respectfully request that we adjourn in her memory. She gave so much to this world and to this city.
Yeah, I'd like to second that, and also all members on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Also, members, I know last week we adjourned in memory of Edna James, but I think we should remember the great name Johnny Otis, who was a great, early, early rock and roller, and really where the music came from. So I ask we adjourn all members for Johnny Otis. This meeting now, Mr. Corretts.
I would just add, since you almost made the connection, that Johnny Otis actually was the person that discovered Edna James, which led to her notable career as well.
But it's so special too about that, and the history is so deep, and they're also have LA roots here. So God bless Edna James, God bless Johnny Otis, and God bless the music. May it never stop. Members, this meeting now is adjourned. Thank you for your day.